I'd like to call the order of this special meeting of the Rattone City Commission. Yes, can we have roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Sigadda.
President.
Mayor Protem Chatterley. Commissioner Schuster.
Present.
Commissioner Giacomo.
Present.
And Commissioner Honeyfield.
Do y'all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, for my nation and for God. In every small, very big change, yes, as well.
Thank you. This is a special meeting of the Rattone City Commission. We have no announcements. We will be moving right into the action items. Item 4A. Deliberate an act on memorandum of understanding between Colfax County and the city of Rattone for an infant surrender device. Who's gonna?
Brenda Abada is gonna call.
Apparently hasn't did.
She's item E. Would you have me turn it down a little?
So, nobody's calling in for A?
No.
Oh, okay. So, who's gonna discuss what we've got going here?
Uh, I'll go ahead.
Okay. Mike Glenn?
Uh, Mayor Commission, so this evening we bring to you a memorandum of understanding. Uh, this is between the city of Rattone and Colfax County. Uh, the county did receive a grant. Uh, this is for what they call an infant surrender device, or many of you may have heard it called a baby box. So, um, the memorandum in your packet kinda spells out, uh, the conditions of the funding. Uh, the conditions of the funding. Uh, this would be, uh, installed at our local fire department. And, uh, the grant would pay for the installation. Uh, one of the items that I don't believe it needs to probably cover is a five to seven-hundred-dollar a year. I don't know if it's an annual service plan or, um, what that would cover, but I do know that the device, it has cameras and, uh, temperature controls. So, it is fairly sophisticated, um, and we probably, it would tie into the Wi-Fi, um, I believe, but we would have some sort of an annual service plan that we would have to cover with that. Uh, pretty minimal, um, but I will get the details, uh, on that to include in our final budget.
So, I'm assuming because of that, it would need to have power?
Yes.
But not water or anything else?
I think just, uh, power and probably.
You know, um, we probably don't have a plan yet of which part of the building we'd put it on.
Um, no, I think they've had some preliminary discussions. I mean, it is considered a historic building.
Right.
And they've got, uh, in the front, the tile work, the glass blocks, and that would need to be taken into consideration, so.
The front of the building isn't exactly, um, private, you know, for someone to feel safe of not being detected.
Yes, I don't know that any of those decisions have been made.
Yeah, I think this is just an MOU for us to partner with the county. Right?
Right, and so it does say the municipality would agree to provide the proper venue, um, or site suitable for the baby box, and then we would agree to contribute all operation and maintenance costs, including the annual fee, uh, term renewal fees, and then, uh, costs for the ongoing twenty-four, uh, training fees.
Well, it's a great idea, so I will move to approve. Your understanding between Colfax County and the city of Rattone for an infant surrender device.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second to approve the MOU. Is there any other questions, comments? Okay. I'm just kind of curious, is what?
That's my idea.
The amounts are gonna be, but it is a needed thing for the community, so.
I do have, uh, handout that the fire chief gave me. Um, yeah, that was just some of my questions earlier, 'cause the fees weren't really spelled out.
Are we, I guess, being responsible? We're gonna be monitoring this, and which person is it? Will it be fires? Will it be police? Things like that, but that stuff, I guess, we don't know. Any other comments, questions? All in favor then? Vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item B, deliberate act on Bixby Electric Proposal for the Rattone Municipal Airport Regulator Rental Utilizing State Price Agreement Number 3080500-22-16991.
Uh, Mayor Commission, uh, this past week, uh, we did have a project that is being funded by FAA and state aviation funds go out to bid, uh, for new electrical vaults. Um, so in the meantime, uh, we do have an issue at the airport that we would like to address, uh, which we could address either by purchasing a new regulator, or this would be the cost to, uh, rent a regulator. So, the cost to the regulator, uh, the one-time cost would be the fourteen thousand, three ninety-four eighty-four, and then we would have, um, a monthly seven hundred and fifty would be the rental rate, um, and we would just rent this, uh, in the interim until that project actually starts construction at the airport and is complete. So, I would anticipate potentially maybe a four to five month period. Uh, would probably be the minimum that we would have to rent, uh, the regulator.
It's probably about forty-five hundred dollars in rent payments.
If we went five months, that's about three thousand, seven hundred and fifty, just the rental.
I know by not having it's inhibiting, um, some medical transports, so.
So, at the termination of this, is there any of the, uh, regulator, cost of that fourteen thousand that would be rebated?
Uh, it is not my, it's my understanding that it would not be rebated. Um, I think we would be obligating ourselves to a three-month rental period as the minimum. But like I said, I think at a minimum, uh, it will take four to five months for the project to be complete. Uh, the bid opening is, uh, I believe, May fourteenth, so we'll have, uh, some more definitive costs, probably at the second meeting, and they put a project itself, and we'll bring that to you for, uh, consideration of award.
Okay, so I think along the lines of Commissioner Honeyfield, this regulator that we're renting will not be part of the installation?
Right, it would not be incorporated into the, to the project because we don't own it.
So, is there a termination fee once we're finished? Do they charge us to come pick that thing up and take back, or is this all-inclusive?
I think it's all-inclusive.
Yeah, I would say it's that part.
It looks like it's inclusive, yeah.
So, we're looking at a total of sixteen thousand, three ninety-five fifty-four. Well, that's with mobilization and to install the rental, then we got the rental price each month. Do you entertain a motion?
I will move to approve the Bixby Electric Proposal for the Rattone Municipal Airport Regulator Rental Utilizing State Price Agreement with set number.
I'll second. I have more than a second to approve the Bixby Electric Proposal. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Item C, deliberate act on Fulcrum Contracting Quote for the Schuler Theater Plumbing Upgrade Utilizing CES Contract Number 2023-02-R3218-ALL. Bless you.
Thank you.
Mike Glenn?
Mayor and Commissioner, in your packet, we do have a letter that we received from the State Historic Preservation Division, um, as we proceed with the Schuler Theater Plumbing and Electrical Project, um, in our conversations with the, um, national, uh, we have a grant from NEH, um, National Endowment for the Humanities. We've determined that it's better to kind of phase this project and address the plumbing first. Uh, we do have a hundred thousand dollar matching grant from, uh, state of New Mexico that does expire as of June thirty, uh, so in order to kind of expedite the plumbing portion of the project, uh, we did get clearance from state historic preservation. Uh, the electrical might take a little bit longer to get the clearance, uh, from state historic preservation, uh, but now that we've received this, we've submitted it to our grant agency, uh, they will be issuing us probably tomorrow a seven-day notice that has to be posted on our website. Uh, once the seven days has passed and upon your approval this evening, uh, we could, uh, enter into an agreement with Fulcrum Contracting to do the plumbing portion of the project. So, they have provided us a quote, and this is based off of the state price agreement, uh, for a total of fifty-seven thousand, three fourteen twenty-nine. Uh, we feel pretty confident that we would be able to complete the work probably early June, and then, you know, issue checks, get the reimbursement from the state, and close up the, that portion of the project by June thirty.
All right, any comments, questions? So, this is just addressing water, no sewer drainage? Correct. And our action with this income for the rest of that hundred thousand? Or revert?
Um, at a previous, I don't know if it was at a previous meeting, but earlier this year, you did approve, um, the contract with Mitchell and Cruz, so we do have a portion of the hundred thousand as professional services.
Okay.
Um, I think it's about sixty-two thousand, so the combined total of the two, um, would exceed the hundred thousand. Uh, we'll probably expend these funds first, and then the remainder would be for the professional services, since their services will be kind of ongoing through the electrical phase of the project. I don't foresee them billing us a hundred percent by June thirty.
Okay. Any comments, questions? Well, it looks like in this thing, there could be some cost overrun in this, in so much as, uh, wall patching's not included, nor is asbestos abatement if they incur it.
Yes, they did include in the quote, uh, that it does not include asbestos remediation if required, and I'm not aware that that's something that would need to be included in the project. Are you aware that there's asbestos?
I was one of those yahoos that took the boiler out of this building, but for some reason, I keep thinking the, the asbestos issue, I don't think is an issue, 'cause the, the radiators were, um, located at the back of that building, and they used a fan system to move it around.
Well, I mean, if, if we run into that type of an issue, or as stated in the shipo letter, if there's any artifacts, I mean, that would.
Right.
Stop the project immediately, I'm sure, so I guess that is a risk that we're, we're taking, but, uh, we're gonna try to make our best effort to expend these funds and get this portion of the project done by June thirty. But yeah, I guess, uh, there's always those unknowns when you're having to.
Well, but water supply.
Cover the wall, or.
Yeah, water supply lines wouldn't be buried, so I, I don't think they would be doing any excavating per se. It's just anything that could've been a wall, that may be an issue, but. Yeah, they list as their exclusions, cut, patch, repair walls, so, yeah, they're not gonna do any of that, so.
Potentially, I mean, cutting and patching walls, we may be able to do some of that in-house, I guess, depending on the extent.
All righty. Make a motion to approve the Fulcrum Contracting Quote for the Schuler Theater Plumbing Upgrade Utilizing CES Contract Number 2027-2-R3218-AML.
One second.
I have a motion, a second to approve the contract with Fulcrum, Fulcrum Contracting? Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Vote by the sound of aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor?
Yes?
Would you mind if I, um, went and called Ms. Abada real quick? I was just texting our admin assistant, and, um, she called, and she was concerned about being able to call in. Um, I hadn't turned on the conference call yet because the meeting hadn't started, so I did ask Rachel to let her know that the meeting started at six, but being that she's still not on, I did ask Rachel, and she said she was concerned that she didn't have the correct number. Would you mind if I went and called her real quick just to clarify that with her?
Sure.
Thank you.
So, we'll hold.
Get your bubble gum. Nice to see you. Did you drive home from Santa Fe with brothers?
I had doctors coming today. I've been here. Yeah, it was.
Uh, real quick, I guess, if we wanted to discuss the previous item on the baby box, I do have a, kind of a brochure that the fire chief gave me. Um, the annual service fee is five hundred dollars. Um, and then there are some additional fees, let's see, which probably we wouldn't have to cover, but the install labor and materials is up to thirty-five hundred. Um, electrical and alarm, so hook up to internal alarm system, must go to a nine-one-one dispatch for use with the baby box. That's about twelve hundred dollars, so I'd need to get clarification if that's the city to pay for that, or.
I thought you said the county was gonna pay for the installation with the grant?
I believe so, but I don't know about this internal alarm system that has to go to the nine-one-one dispatch, so that was one of the questions I had, but the annual fee for monitoring, I do know that we would pay that, and it's five hundred dollars.
Okay, as far as, you know, Glenn, the fire chief's okay if it is located?
She was very appreciative.
Uh, yes, he has given his consent to participate in this.
She thought it was a Zoom, so she's been trying to get on a Zoom, so she was, she was pleased to get the call.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi, this is Brenda Abada.
All righty, thank you for joining us. This is Mayor Sigadda. We're moving on to item E, deliberate act on appeal of Resolution 2024-09 concerning a dangerous building or premises and requiring removal at 108 Pickles Avenue.
You skipped one.
I skipped D. All right, okay, we'll back up one. I already crossed D off. Deliberate an act on appeal of Resolution 2024-08 concerning a dangerous building or premises and requiring removal, 1521 Cedar Street. Better?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Michael Ann?
Uh, Mayor Commission, uh, in your packet this evening, we do have an appeal to a previous resolution, uh, that was brought to the commission for consideration. That was Resolution 2024-08. Um, in your packet, we do have a copy, um, of the appeal letter submitted by Stephen Draper, and also a copy, um, of that previous resolution, uh, that also includes a copy of the state statute and also the city's ordinance. Um, I believe we have representatives here this evening from our planning and zoning code enforcement, uh, department. Uh, George Riley, we'll go ahead and turn it over to you.
Mayor and Commissioners, I'm here tonight to talk about, about the four resolutions that we talked about. I believe it was in February, February the, uh, thirteenth of twenty-four, we brought forth all four of these resolutions, and, and they were read into the record at that time, so I don't know that they need to be read into the record again. Uh, Mr., uh... Yes, Mr. Draper is here tonight, uh, to appeal the decision that the, the board made last, I mean, the commission made last, uh, in February, so I would like for Mr. Draper to, uh, address the, the commission, if that's okay.
My name is Steve Draper, and I live at 1521 Cedar. Uh, my building that they're saying it needs to be tore down, that's probably the strongest building in this town, because two railroad cars underneath it. It's got a lot of steel. What they did is they put a, I don't know how many years back before I bought it, they put a regular house around it. So, you can see the railroad cars when you walk in, inside the building. And I've complained to the city about the easement, about the power lines, uh, encroaching on my property. The, the runoff, the water just runs right into my building, and they won't correct that. The slope of it. Uh, so, with the state being on the backside with the interstate, it floods my property too. So, I had to put pro panel, 'cause I couldn't afford to do it, a real fence, 'cause they, the state came in there and put that big high-water, you know, steel fence for the deer. And I just kind of patched it up, and I slowed the, the water down, so it kind of helped me from the water running in the back of the property. So, uh, getting back to the building, there's a, there's a, uh, it's built, was built correctly years ago with a thirty-inch pitch on the roof. So, I just now got an approval from the s, planning and zoning to go ahead and finish putting my other side of my roof on my building, and I, I'm gonna do that. I've already got the pro panel. That cost me about seven thousand dollars. And I'm waiting, I called in, uh, right before March, I think it was, or something, uh, for an appraisal on my property, so I can get some money, 'cause I live on social security and I'm, I'm disabled. So, I try to work on all this stuff myself, and, uh, little by little, I try to get something done, and I have cars in my yard. Uh, I'm not a, I'm not a business, I'm a hobby for myself. I just work on cars. It looks kind of tacky. Everybody come in, city of Rattone complains about it, but I help a lot of people, too. I work for ten dollars an hour helping them fix their own problems in town, so I don't think I'm doing anything terribly wrong in the city of Rattone. I'm a good citizen. My ex-wife, she worked for state police for thirty years. We raised our kids here. They graduated. So, I, I just request the city to reconsider, so I don't have to tear my buildings down. I just want to try to fix them. I'm very, I don't have a lot of money. My property's almost paid for. I want to keep it that way, is, you know, so I ain't got no big payments, uh, with taxes and everything, so. That's where I'm at with it, just so I could kind of explain myself, and I know it doesn't look that presentable. Everybody goes by and tells me how bad my place looks, so, but that's about all I can say at this point, so.
Thank you, Mr. Draper. Questions?
Mayor, good night.
Sheriff, Mr. Draper.
To start with, I, I would like to, to let Mr. Draper know that the city has no intentions of, of demo in his home. Our intentions are, Kevin, if you would, if you would, the slides here, the first slide you're looking at right here is, is, this is actually a city easel, it's actually Kiowa Avenue, and that's where Steve's talking about the drainage and, and the power lines. There are power lines and, and different utilities under there. All of this stuff that belongs to Steve in this picture is actually on city property. Go ahead and next slide, Kevin, if you would, please. This orange mark right here, Steve built what he called the carport here, had begun when Kevin asked him to stop because he didn't have a zoning permit. The orange mark, it was done by Shields survey. Uh, we repainted it again today to make sure we were in the right place, so we could show you tonight, uh, that everything to the left of that needs to go away. Uh, and then, that leaves his setback, I think, is pretty close to be incorrect, but he can't have anything to the left of that mark. The next slide, Kevin? This is another, uh, a, a view of Steve's property. The, the blocks and stuff that you see here are where there would be a sidewalk if there, if, if there was room. Uh, so, again, that stuff's all in city right-of-way. Next, next slide. Just another view of the weeds and stuff. The next slide, Kevin? This is where Steve had talked about putting the propane, and you can see the curb there where the sidewalk would be if it would, if, if, if there was a sidewalk there. Next slide, please. This, this, again, we're gonna find another orange mark there. Steven, in the middle of this pro panel stuff, we're gonna find a mark where is the south side of his property, and all of this, the, this equipment, motorhomes, uh, RVs, all the stuff, boats, it all needs to go somewhere. It just, it doesn't fit here, and, and it is nice, or for everybody that comes into town from the north that gets off on that exit, they see it, and, and it's our intention is to clean the city up, where people come to Rattone, look at the city, and they don't see the blight that we have in our city right now. So, uh, Mr. Mr. Draper, we have no intention of demo in your home. What we're asking you to do is to find somewhere to go with this stuff and to make your property, uh, presentable, uh, according to the city ordinances.
Okay, good night, Steve. Again?
Uh, I have a, a map of, there, there in front of the property, what George was just showing you.
Next slide. Go to the next one.
You gotta go back to where the carport was.
Back up front to the car. There we go.
Yeah, see the carport? See his orange mark? Shields came in here, and he put a, a stake right there. Well, if you go down to the next property over, his fence post is at seven foot, four inches, and mine's at nine four, nine feet, four inches. So, the front of the, the survey is wrong.
Well, we have, we have a registered surveyor, uh, with the state of New Mexico that surveyed this property. We paid for the survey, Steve, and I'm not gonna argue that you disagree with the, with the registered surveyor, Steve, other than Lee Shields. registered surveyor, Steve, other than Lee Shields.
You can, the thing is, is right here in the front, you can park a car, if you back up over here, I always park my car, so he's saying there's not enough room for a sidewalk through here, and that's not true.
I said, if there was a sidewalk, that's where it would be.
If there was, I'll tell you what, I could put a truck right there, right here.
That's all city property, Steve.
It doesn't matter, you guys are out of compliance, because you don't fix a water problem, and it's, I have to combine, apply myself to your outlook of what you're reading and your, of your job. And I understand you got a job to do, and I'm all for you to clean up Raton. I'm glad you tore down that building after 30 years in the middle of city, you know, the city. That big two-story house, that looked, J.C. Penney.
Mr. Draper, could you address the commission, please? We're here to talk about your property, and your property by the plot we've got here, it's not a square piece of property, so if it's 7'4" here and 9'4" somewhere else.
No, this is the front, this is the front of, I'm just saying, right where he tried to point, in the front of the property on Cedar Street, right there in the front. When you go, if you was to drive and park right in the front of my property, like where those orange marks are.
That's a south marker that Shields surveyed.
It doesn't matter, where that curb and gutter is, right here, right where they marked it on the road, right here. If you go right down at the corner where I put that carport, where Shields put the stake at 9'4", and then the next property at 1515 is 7'4", right in the front. So his is, his is sticking out further towards the curb and gutter, mine's way in, and they just now did that. They paid a surveyor to do it. And that's, that's wrong. So you can't.
Mr. Draper, you know, our intention is not to make hardship on our citizens, but we do need, we do need to be a little bit more presentable than we are. And, I mean, you would, I'm sure you would be welcome to have it surveyed on your own at your own expense, but at this point, and then you would have an actual argument if you had a different, you know, licensed surveyor coming up with different markings, but since, you know, right now you don't, I'm just going to, I think, I guess that our suggestion to you would be, you know, work with our zoning officers.
Do you know, I'll tell you this, I worked for BTU, and it was a rough place to work. They got so much junk, they don't even know what to do with it all. Nobody says nothing to them. When PJ Miletta was here, he was supposed to rezone I-25 going through the City of Raton. They didn't do it.
Trust me, everybody who has too much junk in their yard is being spoken to, including we're shaking our own, you know, finger at our, at the city's property itself, because we have things that we're trying to clean up.
I'm not against any, I just, I tried buying a piece of property at the sale for $300, and it's too small. I can't even move my camper over there.
The question here, the question here before us is, to uphold what our zoning folks have come up with, we've got a survey that shows that you're definitely over your property. At this time, too, also, Mr. Riley, I believe we have Mr. Gairos here, too, if he would like to offer anything.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Donald Gairos. I had not met some of you, I've met some of you, but my role, I guess, if you will, is a contract attorney to deal with what are deemed more commonly called public nuisance cases. You could call it dangerous buildings, you could call it blight, you could call whatever, but my only purpose tonight, or not my only purpose, but would be to explain what the procedures are, the legal procedures. And so far, the city is on track. This is a type of hearing where Mr. Draper and the ones who object to the resolution have the opportunity to not necessarily present argument, present evidence. Other than that, then the commission, after taking evidence and minimal argument, then decides whether they uphold the resolution. If they do, then Mr. Draper and the others have the option of appealing to district court. They would do that by filing a notice of appeal with the commission and then filing a petition in district court. If they do that, two scenarios, if they don't, if they do not, let me backtrack a little more, if the commission upholds their resolution, then there's a period of time to file the appeal. But if the person does not appeal, then they have a period of time to start either curing the defect, or the commission has the option to cure the defect by either contracting for it, or, that's probably the most common way, and then whoever the contractor is has the option of, if something's removed and has value, they can take that as their pay. Or what's probably more common is that the lien is placed on the property, and then the person has a right of redemption. And then it goes, it kicks into another process, foreclosure, which gets a little more complicated. I don't want to give you more than what you're needing to do tonight, but just to kind of outline, Mr. Draper, and if any other one else who is here to appeal, it's just to provide evidence and not necessarily argument, that's not really going to sway. I mean, it could, I'm not telling you what to do, all I can give you is the options. But the legal standard is, they have to present evidence that the planning and zoning department code enforcement is incorrect, that they are mistaken, or that they are acting arbitrarily, capriciously, or maliciously. Those are the standards that the courts are going to look at. Finally, in doing some research on these type of cases, there's very little case law in New Mexico. And what that tells us is that most of these decisions that a commission makes, or a council, or municipality, whatever it is, get upheld, they get upheld. And so the question is just working with the individuals to try and remediate. Any questions at this point? If not, I'll be on standby for.
Do we have to pay for to take it to district court, I mean, to file it and stuff?
Yes, you can either get an attorney, or you can represent yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Gairos.
Could I direct a question to George?
Yes.
So, Kiowa Street was planted and placed before Interstate 25 was developed?
Say this again, please. Kiowa Street? Yes, I got you now.
So it was a through street at one time, and then the interstate came through and eliminated it. So it's still on the city plan?
Yes.
So the property to the south then was acquired when the interstate was put through?
And that's the OT property, yes, sir.
I see, okay. And so, Mr. Draper, you have no arrangement or anything in writing with the state of New Mexico to use their property?
No, I haven't, I don't have nothing.
And did you ever have anything in writing from the City of Raton to use Kiowa Street?
No, I just, I tried to get it vacated so I could buy the property, and because it's not a street anymore, the only reason why they won't sell it to me, because there's a manhole at the end of the street.
Utilities, I know that, I know that, yes. So what I would ask the commission to do at this, at this point is to move forward with this resolution, and let's try to make a difference in our city.
And Mr. Riley, has any effort been made to abate this since we met in February?
We, there's some motorhomes and RVs have been moved to different locations in town, and it just creates a nuisance somewhere else. And, you know, Steve talked about buying a lot down on Garcia Street for $300. We have to go to a place with the stuff that's zoned properly.
Correct.
So that, that's, we just don't want to scatter it all over town.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any comments, questions? I can't motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-08 concerning dangerous buildings or premises and requiring removal, -1521 Cedar Street.
Are you upholding the original resolution? Is that what you're?
Yes.
Okay. One second. Motion and a second to uphold Resolution 2024-08. Does, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Sagata?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
Yes. All right, thank you. Moving on to item E, deliberate an act on appeal of Resolution 2024-09 concerning a dangerous building or premises and requiring removal, 108 Pickles. Mr. Riley?
Yes, again, the city would ask that the commission move forward to approve 2409. I think Ms. Abada is on the speaker here to talk to you about the issues that she sees.
Ms. Abada, would you like to address this at this time?
Yes, I am here to appeal the dangerous building or premises. It's not a dangerous building. I haven't seen an inspection of how that became part of a dangerous building. I know in the letter that I received, they said there was an inspection by George Riley, but I haven't seen that inspection. I also wanted to let you guys know, I sent an appeal to meet my deadline back in February to let you know that I'm trying to find an attorney to help me with this, and I'm still in motion to try to get that attorney. I started out my legal shield, which I paid for, and they didn't have anybody that could work, you know, work out of the City of Raton, so now I'm looking for an attorney that can help me out of the City of Raton. I've tried a couple attorneys in Raton, except for Borsham, and they're too busy to take the cases. So I wanted to, just to get an appeal and let you guys know that I'm trying to find an attorney, because I don't believe it's a dangerous building. You know, it's got lights, it's got gas, there's nothing falling off of it, there's no, you know, the roof's not caving in, there's nothing boarded up. So that's why I'm here today to appeal that withholding.
All right, thank you. Mr. Riley, would you like to just?
Yes, Mayor and Commission, I think you have in front of you a state ordinance, I think it's 315.8, is that correct?
The statute?
Yes.
It's 3...
18.5.
Okay, I'm sorry, 3.18.5, Ms. Abada. And that, that, that ordinance talks about dangerous buildings and the removal of debris. And so what, we're not, again, we're not looking to demolish your building, we're looking to clean up the property around the building. I don't think you can see the pictures here tonight, I wish you could, but they're showing pictures of the old vehicles that are there. There's a motor leaning up against the fence. Go ahead, Kevin. There's cars, there's cars up on, actually sitting on tires with the windows broken out. There's actually three vehicles on Pickles Avenue that need to be removed. All of the, all of the junk on Pickles Avenue there needs to be removed. These are pictures of the alley, I believe the property is rented at this time, but the yard is just a mess, and there's just, there's just, it needs to be cleaned again. And we're not here, like I said before, to cause you hardship with your renter or anything else, we're just here to clean this property up.
And I've spoke to George Riley several times over the phone, you know, I've got, I'm here in Albuquerque, I go up there, and I'm like, well, there's no weeds, but yeah, there's the cars. And he and I talked about, well, is there a way, you know, I can get rid of some of those cars? And, you know, he suggested, he said, well, nobody will tell it unless you can prove it's your car. Well, they're not my cars, I don't know if they're under my mom's name, my grandpa's name, my brother's name. And so I went to the MVD, and I got nowhere. So any suggestions on that, of course, I'd have to get with my brother, but any suggestions on that to help me, I'd be greatly appreciated, because I got nowhere with the MVD.
Well, in my opinion, this ordinance will help you solve that issue, because if we do go to district court, the judge is going to say that we can move those cars, even though we don't have a title. And that we can clean things up. So this ordinance really not only helps the city get things cleaned up, but it helps people like you that have lost titles to vehicles, and I know that you have told me before that you guys haven't been able to pro-bake this property because you can't agree with your brother. So I'm just here to try to help clean up our city again. And this is an eyesore that everybody sees right down in our downtown area when we have festivals and stuff downtown. So, again, we're just here to clean the city up. And I, at this time, I would ask.
How long do we have from this point? You know, I'm still trying to find an attorney, or I'm trying to get this done, like what time period do I have?
I believe you have 20 days. I'll let the attorney address the issue with you.
Mr. Gairos?
Good evening, Ms. Abada. By the ordinance and by the statute, there is five days to file the notice of appeal with the commission, and there's 20 days to file your petition for review in the district court. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I don't, let's say, five, in five days, 10 days, I'm still trying to find an attorney. I can do that, correct?
Yeah, all you would do is submit a letter or some type of email to the city clerk just saying, you're hereby notified that I am appealing your decision. We're assuming that the city upholds their resolution. If they do, then you would just submit some kind of communication saying that you are hereby appealing that decision. And then, it's hard to do it without a lawyer in district court, but, you know, hopefully by then, you have at least 20 days to try and get an attorney so that they can file a petition. There's one more thing I, no, it just passed me, there was something back there, I was going to relay, but if I think of it, I'll, I'm sorry, there's another process, and it can be time-consuming, but on, there's a provision in the statutes for abandoned vehicles. You can go to magistrate court, I believe it's magistrate court, and declare that the vehicles, you'll need to speak with law enforcement, they'll need to do a VIN inspection, and then you can go to the magistrate court and say they're abandoned, they've been abandoned for X amount of years. The court can then give you title, and then you're able to do with them whatever you want. That's another, that's another way.
Thank you. And Ms. Abada, this is Mayor Sagata, like George and Mr. Gairos said, we're just trying to help you clean up your property, and this is a tool that will allow you to do that.
Okay. Okay.
Mayor Commission, so I'd ask you to move forward to approve this resolution.
To uphold the resolution?
Yes, sir, to uphold the resolution, I'm sorry.
That's all right, sir. Any other things to motion?
I'll move to uphold the Resolution number 2024-09 concerning dangerous buildings, specifically the premises and requiring removal of property at 108 Pickles.
A motion and a second to uphold Resolution 24, 2024-09. Let's get it out there. All right. Desiree, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Mayor Sagata?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
Yes. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Abada.
Thank you, I appreciate you.
You bet. Item F, deliberate an act on appeal of Resolution 2024-10 concerning a dangerous building or premises and requiring removal at 524 South First Street. George?
Again, we have pictures of 524 South First Street. There really hasn't been much change. Go ahead and go through the slides there, Kevin, if you would, please. It's bad in the front. Go ahead, Kevin. This behind the, behind the black fence here, I don't know how you even walk through there, it's just loaded with debris. I don't know what it's all for. But, next slide, Kevin. We've actually, we've actually overflowed, where we have nowhere to work, you can see through the gate there, so we work in the street, and it's just, it's right next to our senior citizens center. Go ahead, Kevin. Go again.
Yeah.
This is, these are tires in the backyard, I don't know if there's one time maybe a tire shop here, which is really just bad for mosquitoes. If they were to catch fire, we could burn the whole neighborhood down. Tires are one of the worst things to have in town. Next slide. There's a pile of bicycles. Uh, there's a pile of bicycles there on the, on the left by that tree. Uh, next slide. Just, just more debris in the backyard. Next slide.
That's the end.
That's all, that's all, so you can back up there, so. Again, I would ask that, that we move forward on, on, uh, to, I'm going to say this wrong again, to approve, to uphold, uh, uh, Resolution number twenty-two-four dash ten, I don't know if Mr. Abeta's here or not.
No, Mr. Pacetti isn't. I did give him a message, um, on his phone, and then, uh, Ms. Abeta had left him, uh, a message with his, with her sister-in-law to get ahold of him, I did not get a call back, I just received the, um, appeal, and that's the only contact I've had.
And again, we're not tearing down a building, we're just.
Cleaning things up.
Cleaning things up. Riley. Entertained a motion.
Mr. Mayor, before, just.
Sure.
Just, uh, to have a clear record, I, you know, maybe the commission can make a finding that uh, reasonable efforts were made to contact Mr. Pacetti, that he did file a notice of appeal, but that the, um, the commission, or the city did make reasonable efforts to contact him and serve him about tonight's, uh, meeting.
Well, that in the minutes, please, Desiree? Thank you, Mr. Gairos.
Move upholding Resolution twenty-two-four dash ten regarding, um, property at five twenty-four South First Street.
Motion and a second to uphold Resolution twenty-two-four dash ten. The location, five twenty-four South First Street, is there any further discussion? Roll call, please, Desiree.
Yes, sir. Mayor Sigala?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo?
Yes.
And Commissioner Honeyfield?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Item G, deliberate and act on the appeal of Resolution twenty-two-four dash eleven concerning a dangerous building or premises and requiring removal, eleven thirty-three Price Street.
George, again, uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I'd ask that we move forward with this resolution. I took pictures again here this morning, Kevin, if you would go through the pictures. Uh, it hasn't got any better, it's actually got worse than it was before. Uh, they've tried to do some cleanup, but, uh, you know, you could do a lot with just some trash bags. And the stuff, the debris's blowing, there's insulation from these, uh, uh, burned properties. And, and, uh, they, they've actually started trying, they started to try to tear one of the buildings down, there's insulation from that blowing all over the neighborhood. And this is behind Denny's. Yeah, and it's just, it's a, it's a shame that we have this and, and the public, the traveling public that stops in Raton sees this every day. It's, 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 it's a mark on our, on our whole city. So I would ask the commission to uphold this one, uh, as well.
Mayor Commission, um, we were notified that, uh, Mrs. Miller is unable to attend due to health issues. Um, so in consultation with the city manager, uh, it was going to be our recommendation that the commission postpone this potentially two months.
Okay.
Maybe till June. If Mrs. Miller, the opportunity to.
I understand that Ms. Miller has had some, some, some issues with her health. And I think that, that she needs to find somebody to help her with, with, uh, handling her affairs at this point in time. We've actually gone sixty-seven days past when, when the hearing, when this hearing should have been held. And, and, and she should have appointed her daughter, Penny Miller, or whoever she wants to take care of her business. The city should not have to suffer because she hasn't appointed somebody to take care of her stuff.
Valid point.
And I wouldn't let anybody else that wants to say something about, about letting this set like, it's terrible. Keep, keep on with the pictures, Kevin.
I'm going to do it.
You know, it's just, look, look at this, looks like a bomb went off. How long are we going to, how long are we going to continue to let this stay? This is summertime coming to Raton. Oh, you know what the travelers look like at this time of year? Schools getting ready to get out, and this is going to be the same, we're going to say, it's the same way as it was last year. Nobody's doing anything.
Mr. Riley, I know one time you and I talked about, um, you were trying to find some means to help people get these things cleaned up if they're not physically able to do it themselves.
Well, that would, that would be the city hiring somebody to clean this up and placing a lien on the property.
Yeah.
It would clean it up, and it would give us the tools to make these people move the vehicles that are there, to remove these, these RVs that are here. This is, this is not just about the, the blight, it's about the crime that's involved here. When we clean this up, we're going to stop the crime in our city.
Right.
And, and, and we've done a great job so far, I just hate to lose the momentum that we, we started.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, just a couple of points. The letter that was submitted by, uh, Ms. Lopez on behalf of Ms. Miller, um, arguably, you can say that that's someone already representing her interests. The other thing is she still has at least two levels of appeal. Uh, where she can not only remediate and negotiate with the commission, the city, but she can also, uh, bring to light any legal challenges that she believes that she may have. Um, I don't know that postponing is going to do anything other than just put, you know, kicking it to the side for now, I think due process is satisfied. Again, she still has a right to appeal, not only to the district court, but as I said earlier on, if the district court issues a, uh, an order upholding the resolution, and let's say the city goes in and remediates and places a lien, she still has one year to, of redemption, to redeem that property. Plus, if she disagrees with the district court, if the district court upholds the resolution, she still has a right to the Court of Appeals and the Supreme Court, so there's, I know it, it, it takes lawyers, it takes money, I, I feel bad, she is ill. Uh, but I think there's plenty of protections built in.
Thank you, Mr. Gairos.
I would like to see some of this trailer park, Mayor. I, I've moved two trailers out of there for the, for her and her husband. And I never got paid no money. I took them out to the sanitary dump. And now George tells me I can't even pull them over home. He'll get the state police after me. I went in there and worked with my backhoe, my equipment. I spent my money, my time. So he put a stop to cleaning that place up himself. So I just, I went in there and, and moved some of that material and took it out to the old sanitary dump before we changed the way it is today. So I just.
And, and I don't want to have to argue this point, but, uh, Mr. Draper was working without a license, and the trailers he were moving were not permitted to move, so we stopped that activity.
Right.
And, uh, at this time, I just ask the commission to please move forward with this resolution. Up, to uphold this resolution.
Thank you.
Well, I got the job done, though. Doesn't matter, it doesn't matter. There's a lot of illegal things that go on.
All right. Order. And entertain the wishes of the commission.
Make a motion to appeal Resolution twenty-two-four dash eleven concerning a dangerous building, premises and requiring removal dash eleven thirty-three Price Street.
A motion to uphold Resolution twenty-two-four eleven?
Is that a minute to uphold? I'll second.
A motion and a second to uphold Resolution twenty-two-four dash eleven? Any further discussion? Yes, can we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mayor Sigala?
Yes.
Commissioner Schuster?
Yes.
Commissioner Giacomo? And Commissioner Honeyfield?
Yes.
All right, thank you. See, uh, Mr. Gairos?
Mayor, do you wish for me to draft the orders, uh, of holding the actions by the commission, or is that something you do? Just offering it?
Mr. Gairos, let me check with city manager Mestes, and we'll get back with you.
Sounds good.
Thank you, thank you. Any other business to come before us, tonight this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you all for being here.